Good evening. And now I call the order of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, August 16th, 2022, 7:00 PM at the Board Meeting Room, 39 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Mr. McClusser, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cheshire.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes, President. If you would, please join with us in a moment of silence, please. And if we would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. What about any items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have an item to add to the agenda, but I would like to move from the consent agenda item number 7H, Shell Building Moral Obligation Support Agreement for further consideration and development from our staff in conjunction with our partners in the state.
All right, sir. What about a second? I'll second. Mr. Cheshire, thank you. Any discussion on that? Okay, gentlemen, cast your vote.
Mine's not working, Kaylin. This is not coming up right.
Okay, I'm gonna stop it and I'll record you.
My vote will be yes.
Thank you. And I'll change that in a minute.
Okay. You good, Kaylin?
Yes, sir.
All righty.
Now we're ready for approval.
What about a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. What about a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dudley, thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I have one piece. I'd like to invite if Ms. Vanderheide would come forth and give us a little more detailed explanation on 7F, only because it's exceeding $690,000, I just think we owe it to the public for them to hear a little bit about what's going on.
Absolutely. And so actually, this $693,000 should have been on the big public hearing list. Of course, it's one of our funds at the very end of our budget. It's Fund 530, and this fund is called Rescue Billing. And this fund was established back years ago when we established the EMAC Committee, which was to establish rescue billing for the county and for the rescue EMS stations in the county. Currently, we do third-party billing for three of the stations in the county. They are in their, in your packet. We do billing for Blair's, Cool Branch, Callan's, and then when we recently added our own public safety, we also bill for those ambulance services as well. And so this fund, the funds come into that particular fund, and we reconcile that monthly. The fee for the third-party biller, which is billed at a rate of 5.5% of the receipts that come in, is deducted along with any credit card fees that may happen because a patient may use their credit card to pay the balance. And so all of the differences are then reconciled from the Treasurer's Office as to what's come in and compared to what the third-party biller has given us as far as reports. And then those monies are sent back out. So it's just cyclical. And the last few years, we have not budgeted. Originally, we did start, and we budgeted this during the regular budgeting process. And we quit doing that because it really was just money in and money out. And it still is to a certain extent. But if something gets hung up and we don't know, does this belong to Blair's, does this belong to Cool Branch, it sits until that is kind of gone through and we actually know who to give that to. So sometimes there's some monies left, and because now we've added a huge part of that, which is our own personal EMS that we are billing for, I mean, that is a very large portion. So you're talking about a lot more money that's going through the fund. Our auditors recommended this year that we budget for it.
And so what I'm hearing you say is this is monies that is due fire and rescue, monies is due public safety, but it is not commingled with tax dollars. This is money they earn and they are, they're receiving.
Correct. And that's why it's completely segregated in a fund all to itself.
It just simply comes in and goes out.
Comes in and goes out to the appropriate parties.
Okay. I made that motion.
Any other questions?
All right. What about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any questions?
Mr. Dalton's already here. Good?
Mr. Dalton, already made.
Yeah, he's already made it. Yes.
You bid your second.
I did the second on it. Yep.
All right, now we need a discussion.
Now let's do something.
Okay, not cast your vote. And that passed at 7-0. Item 7, Consent Agenda. What about a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. What about a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Dudley, right?
Either one, yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Any discussion on that? All right, if not, gentlemen, cast your vote. And we're 7-0, 7-0 on that. Okay, we're down to presentations. Gentlemen, if you would join me down front, I think Tunstall High School Robotics are up. Y'all bring your Hey, welcome. For those of you that don't know, I'm a Tunstall High School 1975 model. And we didn't have robots back then, but boy, if we did. But it is my honor to present to you guys a certificate of excellency. And it reads, "The Tunstall High School Trojans Robotics Team was named the 2021-22 First Chesapeake Norfolk Qualifier Alliance Finalist. Jessica Jones, Tunstall High School Agricultural Education Teacher and Coach for the team, was named 2021-22 First Chesapeake State Compass Award Recipient for the season, and the team also earned other accolades such as fourth place in gameplay, a third place in Think Award, and they placed second in the Innovative Award. Pittsburgh County Board of Supervisors expresses its deepest congratulations and admiration to the Tunstall Trojans Robotics Team for these amazing accomplishments, and wish you all the very best in your future endeavors. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, congratulations." Jessica, would you like to say a word or two?
So thank you. Ultimately, thank you for acknowledging the work that we're doing at Tunstall High School in the STEM field, but mainly the work and accomplishment of these students and being trendsters for what we're doing for the community and for our region. So.
That's great. Thank you so much. Principal, Ron Bowles, you want a word?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just extremely proud of our, our students and Dr. Jones. They work extremely hard. They're a small team, but they accomplished a great deal. We thank you all very much for your support and thank you for doing this for them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Y'all would just stay here for a picture or two and we'll give you a round of applause. Dr. Jones, you're being summoned to the office, please. What about the secretary? I mean, I'm at, Bucky Dawson. Come on down, Bucky. George, come on down.
Doing good.
Hey, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, Willie Fitzgerald. Come on down, Willie. Good to see you again. Hey, look, go ahead. There you go. I'm sorry about that. I missed All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Hey, thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Whatever you think, best. I don't care.
Totally.
Yeah, okay, I can.
You're the suspect. It looks like a flyer.
We're gonna recognize a outstanding group of young folks that did internships this summer, and we hope that you all are here. And Dana, you, you guys need to come up if you would. I'll tell you what, if you read them, I'll present them. How about that? If you'll read them, I'll present them. Come on here. Okay, there they are. You have a speech.
I do, but I'll stand here. I don't have to stand up this long.
No, you can read your speech.
All right, I will. I will. I wanted to tell you a little bit about this internship program and why we're here. So thank you, everyone. My name is Dana Wilson. I serve as Work-Based Learning Program Coordinator at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research. I've been blessed to be a part of this internship program since last year when it started. This is an eight-week internship program over the summer, but I want to emphasize that it's not just the eight weeks of work. This actually started back in February and March. Students were submitting applications. They were writing resumes and cover letters. We had meet and greets. We had interviews. We had whole selection process. This has been going on for a long time. So any students that are still here have made a huge commitment. Their dedication needs to be acknowledged. So I just wanted to make sure that I said that. Thank you all for being here. We don't have all, but we have a good chunk for today. So some of the internship placements this year were in private sector businesses as well as county administration. Our private sector businesses included Broadsville Animal Clinic, Gretna Animal Hospital, Danville Life Saving Crew, Woodall Auto, Camp Seale and PATH. County administrative offices included Information Technology, Community Development, Parks and Rec, Public Relations, the Pet Center, the Commissioner of Revenue Office, and the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. And Pittsburgh County Schools had interns with IT, Finance, and Maintenance. So though we started off this program with 29 interns, we are finishing today with 24 who are able to make it all the way through. Some of the students that weren't able to make it were, you know, ended up having to back out because of transportation issues or family emergencies, things like that. But we're very proud of all of the students that have started off this program, and we're really happy that you're all here. And thank you for the support for their families, but also from the administration who provided funding for your stipends. So just wanted to say thank you for all of that.
Yeah, that is the way to be found. What about Roger Adams? Roger, you here? Come on down, sir. And Eli Clark, you come this way maybe, Eli? Are you here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. We've never done it this way before. What about Skylar Craft? There you go. Good to have you. Christian Dalton. Okay. Grayson Daniel. Okay. Grant Gibson. Okay. Juan Gonzalez. Juan? You said here? Okay, good. Alejandro Harris? Yeah, that's it. Okay, she's not here. Kara King. Sierra King. Yeah. Sorry. How you doing? Mariah Kelly. Evan Light, Evan Lee, I'm sorry. You worked Commonwealth Turners Office, didn't you? Good. Thank you, sir. Yep, Zafira Lopez. Katie McClemmons. Katie? Cheyenne Oster. Wonder who that is? Congratulations. Thank you. I think the mama needs to come up here. Trevan Pritchett? Not here. Okay, got you. Jacob Richardson. Liam Strange. Liam? Haley Vaden. Sorry about that. Thank you. Yeah. Colin Waller. There you go. Congratulations. Cora Wilson. Dylan Buchanan. I think that's it. Good? Okay, absolutely. Yeah. How you gonna do that?
Well, let's take a photo real quick, and then we can have Angela have a speaking for you.
Okay, cool. Kaylin? Hey, listen, if there's any parent or family member would like to come up and get a picture and be with your loved one, by all means, come on up. I, I think there was a couple others that wanted to speak. How you doing? Been a, good, good to see you for a while.
Yeah, I find I get hooked on friends, right? I just want to say a big thank you also. I have been involved as an instructor with this program now for my second year. I, those that know me know that this is, runs through my blood. It's what our young people need with work-based learning, and I'm gonna change that to high-quality work-based learning. The things they learn while on their hands-on experienced jobs teaches them more than you will ever know. You know, we all need technical skills, but the soft skills, the actual knowledge they gain from this. So I want to thank the Board of Supervisors here a big thank you because this program needs to continue. It makes a big difference in these students' lives. So I want to say thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Jones? Okay. All right, we got the pictures, I guess. That's it, huh? Okay. Thank you all again. Congratulations. Hey, listen, we had a student or two that wanted to say a few words, so by all means, you go right ahead.
I just wanted to say that I'm extremely honored and grateful that I was able to be a part of this program. I've gained invaluable knowledge over the summer, and it was honestly very amazing to be able to work in my chosen profession and just kind of get a pre-work experience of what it will be like and a varied difference of other fields that I could work in as well. I just wanted to say thank you again.
All right, that was the fun part. I think we have some more presentations, Greg.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Anne Sparks, I believe you're up next. Ms. Anne, with the Chamber of Commerce. Come on up, Anne. Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. I don't know if I can follow that so well, but we'll give it a try. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Monday, staff, and the members of the community. And I do want to say hello to Kaylin. You've been very helpful in my preparation for the presentation tonight. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well, as Mr. Chairman said, my name is Anne Moore Sparks, and I am the new President and CEO of the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce as of April. So we're four months in. And I wanted to take this time tonight just to talk a little bit about the chamber. As you know, you know, when I met with Mr. Monday about a month ago, when we formed a relationship, he graciously invited me to talk before you this evening. So, you know, I struggled and I thought about my presentation. And what I want to do is just have a conversation with you. And then I do have a brief, brief presentation about a program that we do at the chamber that I'm seeking support for tonight. But we all know, the chamber's the largest business network in the region. We, we boast 550 businesses and organizations, and that equals about 18,000 employee members. What I've done since April, and I think it's really important as a new leader coming into a new role, I've really taken the time just to listen to our stakeholders. I've spent a lot of time in the county just listening. And I think after I've done my research, I've learned that a lot of the business in the county feel underrepresented. And my leadership style is I like to form relationships. And the chamber is a relationship-driven organization. So I know that we've got some work to do in the county. And I know that when the building sold from Blair's and the chamber moved to the institute, I know that that didn't sit well for others, for some, rather, many, I should say. But I'm here tonight just to tell you that the chamber represents businesses in the city and the county, Danville, Chatham, Gretna, and Hert. And being a county girl myself in Broadsville, I understand the value of relationships. So I'm making the county a priority with my time, with our outreach and programs and initiatives. What I'd like to do, I'd like to meet with each supervisor and get a better understanding of the businesses and business needs in your district so that we can continue to provide dynamic resources and networks to our chamber members. You know, the growth in our community over the next three to five years is gonna be tremendous. I'm very excited about the opportunity to lead an organization that is going to represent the business community in our region. So over the next several weeks, the chamber will be participating in a strategic planning process. I encourage you to participate in any surveys or focus groups that we have. I think it's extremely important that we hear from the community and the members so that the chamber can meet the needs of the business. that the Chamber can meet the needs of the business community. I encourage you to come to our events. We host about 60 events a year, many are networking. We are fully face-to-face now, so I welcome you to come. My door is always open, and I just look forward to strengthening some relationships, meeting new people, and the Chamber's here to support in any way that we can. The second part of my presentation tonight, and Kaylin, I think I know just hit the, okay, I'm not tech savvy like these cool robotics kids, but we'll give it a try. Very quickly, the Chamber has a very interesting program called Rev Up Danville, Pennsylvania. And what that is, it provides gap funding to new business startups and expansions who typically would not get traditional funding at financial institutions. And we partner with a host of other organizations, and you can see those there, City of Danville, The Launch Place, Ecosystem, Dream Launch, SBDC, and the River District Association. And let me say this first, anyone who is interested in starting a business, you go through sort of a 16-week boot camp called Dream Launch, and at the end of that boot camp, you decide if you're ready to pitch to a panel of investors, basically, and that's the Rev Up Committee. So by the numbers, we've had 350 Dream Launch Boot Camp participants. Out of that, 129 participants completed the boot camp. 19 of those decided that they're going to pitch to the Rev Up Committee for funding. And in the last two years of our existence, we've awarded eight businesses a total of $100,000. Out of those eight businesses, five are located in the city and three are located in the county. Whoops, excuse me. Uh-oh, Kaylin. I'm going backwards, I'm not the right thing. Okay, that's okay. I'll go ahead. Again, we've awarded $100,000 to eight businesses, five are in the city, eight are in the county. Our funding model is we receive $25,000 from the City of Danville, and that $25,000 is earmarked specifically for businesses in the city outside of the River District. We received $25,000 from The Launch Place. Those funds can be used for businesses located either in the city or the county. And I'm here tonight, after a conversation with Mr. Monday, to request $25,000 from the county to be earmarked specifically for those businesses located in the county. Our next, let's see, should I advance? Okay, there we go. Okay. So you can see our participants from 2021, and then you can see the businesses who pitched in 2022. Am I okay to advance? Okay. There we go. Our 2021 Rev Up Award winners, Funky Fleece Farm, and if you haven't ever been out there, I encourage you to, it's in Gretna, it's an alpaca farm. We provided them money to pour concrete for their barn. Hawthorne and Jade, Blue Ridge Performance Factory located in the county, and Manifest Your Vision in the city. This year's winners, Crown de Soul in the city, Dad's Garage in the county, and that's contingent upon some county licensing. Body by Kay in the city, and the Historic North Theater. You can see we have our Rev Up Pitch mentors. Each company that pitches is assigned a mentor to help them through the process. The judges are made up of individuals from the city and the county. You can see our committee as well. And then we're getting ready to start our 2023 boot camp where funds will be awarded in May. And again, there's just an overview of the funding. And again, this is a wonderful program that provides grant, excuse me, gap funding to startup businesses or expansions in the city or the county. And I respectfully request the money which will go to help businesses in the county. Thank you.
All right, Ann, thank you so much. Gentlemen, y'all have any questions? You told me you were coming, you didn't say you was going to ask for money. But I do understand that.
Thank you.
If not, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Our next. Y'all take care. Our next presenter is Gail Bartsch, and she is coming to speak to us about the 1% sales tax referendum that will be on the ballot in November. And I think collectively, this entire board does support that tax increase. And you put this thing in a nutshell, as taxpayers, do we want to pay the whole bill or do we want to let somebody else help us pay that bill? Because it's inevitable.
Thank you.
Gail, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate those remarks, too. We certainly do need your support. Good evening, members of the board, county administrator, staff, and members of the community. I'm Gail Bartsch, a volunteer from the Dan River District, and I'm representing Pennsylvanians for a Brighter Future 2022 and our Vote Yes for PCS campaign team. On November 8th, the citizens of Pennsylvania County will have the opportunity to approve a new 1% sales tax that will generate approximately $3.8 million per year for 19 years to upgrade and renovate 10 elementary schools and provide additional classrooms and repair to our Career and Technical Center. It is important that every voter understand that this new revenue will only be used for school construction and renovation. The sales tax will not apply to groceries, medication, or to certain agricultural products. We also know that surrounding areas have already passed and implemented this 1% sales tax for their school improvements. When we shop in their communities, we are helping these cities and counties build their new schools and make needed renovations. Our volunteers have been working hard to educate voters on how this additional penny on $1 will provide a safer and innovative learning environment for our children and for our teachers. We have met with PTOs, fire departments, rural town clubs, and town councils. We have the endorsement from Pennsylvania County NAACP and the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce, as well as support from the Pennsylvania County Farm Bureau Board and the Pennsylvania County Farm Bureau Women's Leadership Committee. Our committee volunteers will be attending the PTO meetings during September and October, and we will be happy to meet with any of the other fire departments or county clubs and organizations. We had numerous residents volunteer for the largest outreach opportunity so far on August 4th during the school open house. Approximately 200 flyers were distributed at each school, and parents had an opportunity to ask questions that were important to their families. Tonight, my task is to request your continued support by participating in upcoming PTO and community meetings, volunteering at the polls on November 8th, and continuing to educate our community members on the importance of supporting the 1% sales tax referendum. We invite everyone to learn more about these funds, how these funds will be used, by visiting the website. It's votyesforPCS.com. That's all together, vote yes, number four, PCS.com. And to send your questions and comments by emailing us at votyesforPCS@gmail.com. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to remind our community about the 1% sales tax referendum that will be on the ballot November 8th. Do you have any comments, suggestions, or questions?
Ms. Bartsch, I think Mr. Warren.
I do, Mr. Ingram. As Mr. Ingram stated, these bills are coming. These capital improvement needs are 100% necessary. So it's going to come down to, does a citizen want to pay 100% of it and force us to raise taxes on real estate so that only property owners are paying this? Or do we want to pass it on to sales tax where everybody will participate, including folks from outside of Pennsylvania County? There's been numbers used that as much as 30% of the sales tax revenue may come from non-Pennsylvania County citizens. I recently read quite a few comments on Facebook of people criticizing the vote for the school system. I challenge them to consider how we can be competitive if we do not educate our children in the best manner possible in a competitive world. I also challenge them to go out and look at the buildings we currently have and the outside support trailers that are now having to be used, and consider the safety factor there. Are they going to be willing to stand up, heaven forbid, we have one of those tragedies, and say, "I voted against that 1% sales tax, and now look"? I don't want to be like Texas was a few months ago. And I wholeheartedly stand and support this, and honestly, I always have stood and said everybody's entitled to their opinion, and I will support that. But I'm having a hard time understanding how citizens that will take the time to educate themselves could possibly not see the value and merits and fairness of a 1% sales tax to fund our schools that is only going to be in effect for 20 years, and it has to go away as part of the legislative position that you're in. So I challenge every citizen that wants to go out there and criticize on Facebook or somewhere else, lay down tonight and think about, if we had one of those mass shootings, are you going to stand up and say, "I voted against that and jeopardize my children or my grandchildren or my neighbor's children or grandchildren"? I just find it offensive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Bartsch, thank you for coming. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, for your comments and for your support. I totally agree with everything you said. The safety, I think, is our number one issue, and especially removing those mobile units that are not connected to the school. This 1% will enable the schools to have all of their classrooms connected, and that's our top priority in this. But thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I think you have about 20, is it 26 of those trailers? Twenty-some?
Yeah.
It's a bunch of them.
It is a lot.
And just to echo what Mr. Warren said, you know, there was a time we worried about a leaking roof or something of a structural issue. But now, to me, the paramount issue is safety for our children. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think not anymore?
That's it, we're down to hearing of the citizens.
Okay. We're down to item number nine. This is Hearing of the Citizens, what a privilege this is. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during this said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Mr. McCluster, who do we have signed up?
We have Jim Scares.
Mr. Scares, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jim Scares, and I live in the Westover District. I am speaking tonight to inform the citizens of this county about moralized and conceit coming from the leadership of this board. As many of you that follow this board's actions know, a few months ago, I was nominated to serve on the DSS Board and was approved by a majority vote. At last night's DSS Board meeting, we had an item on the agenda for a vote to revise the DSS Board's bylaws to correct a noncompliant issue that was identified earlier in the year. The chairman of this board was informed of this issue when it was first identified as it also applied to a noncompliance issue with the Board of Supervisors' appointment process to the DSS Board. At the time of last night's DSS Board meeting, the leadership of this board had taken no action to correct their own noncompliance issue. In last night's DSS meeting, before a motion could be made to vote on the bylaws revision, Mr. Ingram made a motion to table the bylaws vote on the pretense that it would give the Board of Supervisors time to fix their compliance issue. Mr. Ingram implied that this may take as long as December to resolve. When questioned on why it would take so long, Mr. Ingram gave a nonsensical excuse. Having read the agenda for tonight's board meeting, I asked Mr. Ingram why it could not be resolved at tonight's meeting since it appeared on the agenda under the work session and for closed session discussion. At this time, Mr. Ingram lied to the whole DSS Board and stated that it was not on the agenda for tonight's board meeting. I stated that I had talked to two board members that had assured me that it was on the agenda and that the county attorney had told them it was too late to revise the agenda because it had already been posted for the public. The only way the agenda can be changed after it has been posted is at the start of the work session before it's voted on and approved by the whole board. After much discussion, Mr. Ingram's motion was seconded, and unfortunately, the motion to table the vote passed. So I have several questions for the leadership of this board, first being, what purpose does it serve to repeatedly lie about something that is so easily proven false? What is your real agenda for preventing the DSS Board from voting to correct this issue with their bylaws? Why did it take multiple secret meetings with several different DSS Board members to secure the vote to table the bylaws vote? My question for you is, are you planning to change the DSS Board from an administrative board to an advisory board so you can control it through the county administrator? Lastly, I have a question for the citizens of this county. How many more times is it going to take catching this chairman of this board and a lie before someone starts asking questions to hold him accountable? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Anyone else signed up?
Bob Carlberg.
Mr. Carlberg.
You may want to pull that mic down. Not quite as tall as Jim.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and fellow citizens of Pennsylvania County. My name is Bob Carlberg, I'm a resident and landowner in the Stanton River District. It has come to my attention that the Board of Supervisors' appointments to the DSS Board are not in compliance with the state of bylaws of the LDSS Board. Article 3, Section 1, membership shall be seven members, each duly appointed by the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors for a specific term of office. Section 5, membership shall be one member from each of the seven magisterial districts in Pennsylvania County, Virginia. Section 6, one member of the board shall also be a member of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Currently, the DSS Board does not have seven appointed members, one from each district, but rather eight, and it is not one member from each magisterial district, but one from each of six districts with two from another. How did eight members get on the LDSS Board? How has payment for this eighth member been appropriated? At last night's meeting, the DSS Board came ready to amend the bylaws to achieve compliance. This was met with opposition from the chairman of the BOSS, a self-appointed representative, Mr. Ingram, who requested that the amendment of the bylaws be tabled indefinitely until the Board of Supervisors could address the situation. According to the BOSS chairman, this may not be isolated to the DSS Board, it may extend to other boards and committees. How far does it go? And what is the cost to the taxpayers of the county? I was questioned last night by the BOSS chairman as to why I think this is suddenly a problem. To paraphrase him, "It's been done this way for a long time and it's never been a problem, so why make it a problem now"? I personally find this response sad, that an elected official in a position of leadership, when faced with clear rules, chooses to ignore them and willfully remain in violation of the rules for an indefinite period of time with little urgency to resolve the issue. The Board of Supervisors' Code of Ethics clearly states, "The effective functioning of democratic government requires that public..." of democratic government requires that public officials, both elected and appointed, comply with both the letter and spirit of the laws and policies affecting the operations of government." Section 4, members shall perform their duties in accordance with the processes and rules and orders established by the Board of Supervisors and boards, committees, and commissions. Section 15, because of the value of the independent advice of boards, committees, and commissions to the public decision-making process, members of the Board of Supervisors shall refrain from using their position to unduly influence the deliberations or outcomes of board, committee, or commission proceedings. Due to the objection of several members, the BOS chairman modified his motion from indefinite to December and hinted at the idea that LDSS might be reassessed and made an advisory board rather than an administrative board. The motion to table was passed, but not without objection. It is my opinion that this act was in clear violation of Section 15 of the Code of Ethics, and that the BOS chairman used his position to unduly influence the deliberation and outcome of the committee meeting. I leave you with the words attributed to Sir Edmund Burke. "All that is necessary for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing." Will you allow evil to remain triumphant, or will you do something? Thank you.
Anyone else, Caleb?
Chuck Angier.
Mr. Angier, come on up.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Chuck Angier. I'm from the Callens-Gretina District. I hadn't planned to speak, so I have nothing prepared, so bear with me. My concern tonight is the Whitehorn Solar Project out in Gretina. I have to go into that project quite frequently, and all I can tell you is that that place has become a disgrace to the county and an embarrassment to the solar industry. There's been no effort to control vegetation. There's been very little, if any, effort to clean up the junk. In fact, across the road from those few residences on Taylor's Mill Road, they did install some evergreen vegetation, but it has been overtaken by the weeds. The weeds are even crawling over the fence. And to top it all off, if I got my facts right, this was the place where Gretina Fire had difficulty getting into a battery fire because of mud, vegetation, and access. And training. Evidently, part of the deal is the solar. People are supposed to provide training to our first responders. I don't know whether it's happening or not. But with 16,000 acres, by my count, of solar farms in this county, if our first responders aren't getting training, they certainly need it. So please take a look at what's going on out there, see if we can stop it. If I was a member living along Taylor's Mill Road there, I would be getting an attorney right about now. But we've got 16,000 acres, so we might want to see what's going on out there and see if we can prevent it from happening somewhere else. Thank you for your service, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Who's up next, Caleb?
Barbara Hancock.
Ms. Hancock. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Barbara Hancock. I'm from the Callens-Gretina District. I've been a registered nurse for the past 30 years and a natural healing coach for the past seven. I am also vice president of the Save the Vax movement. We offer hope to those who are looking to potentially reverse damage caused by the COVID-19 vaccine. Some of you are already experiencing obvious brain-related symptoms due to your COVID-19 vaccination status. Symptoms can include emotional dysregulation, cognitive decline, and speech impairment. The COVID vaccines can contribute to brain disease as the lipid nanoparticles within the vaccines pass through the blood-brain barrier, causing organic damage within the brain at the cellular level. The graphene oxide within the vaccines causes clotting, which reduces blood flow to the brain as well as the rest of the body, and puts the individual at risk, at a high risk for strokes and mini-strokes. Parasites within the COVID vaccine may contribute to both heart disease and brain disease. There is much research going on regarding this topic. Several researchers have now made a connection between COVID mRNA vaccines and prion disease, which can precipitate rapid-onset dementia as well as psychosis. The most famous prion disease is mad cow disease, and I believe you all got a handout regarding that. For those of you who are experiencing brain disease due to your COVID vaccination, we have some recommendations for you. First, we recommend getting on hydrogen water, which can reduce cognitive symptoms almost instantaneously by passing through the blood-brain barrier, and binding to harmful elements from the vaccine and helping remove them from the brain and body. Secondly, we recommend taking some form of anti-parasitic medication or undergoing a parasite detox. Ivermectin addresses all forms of parasites. Wormwood is a supplement that can address parasitic infection as well. Ginkgo biloba has also demonstrated to be useful in helping COVID patients with long-hauler symptoms related to memory loss and brain fault. As spike proteins cause much of the damage in both COVID and COVID vaccinosis cases, it is highly likely that it would help those with vaccine-related memory loss as well. I would recommend organic ginkgo biloba tincture for at least 180 days. Go-to Cola is a supplement that can also help with regenerating the nervous system as well as brain cells. Nitric oxide helps with restoring blood flow throughout the brain and body. You can get this in a natural form through beets, including raw beets, beet juice, and beet powder. Cayenne pepper helps to prevent clotting throughout the body. Getting on therapeutic ketogenic diet is highly recommended, as it has shown to help people with a number of neurological disorders. Ketones via MCT oil or coconut-based powder can be helpful for mental acuity as well. Omega-3 supplementation via fish oil, flaxseed, or avocado oil is highly recommended. Eating wild-caught fatty salmon is also good for brain function. We hope these recommendations are helpful to everyone, and as you start to heal yourselves, you will consider that your constituents need this information as well. Thank you all so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else?
Stephen Barrow.
Come on down, sir. Good to have you.
Hi, my name is Steve Barrow. I'm the owner of Hammer Hill Computers. We are in the Dan River District, the luxurious Dan River District, I should say, because I love that area.
I like it.
I just wanted to come and introduce myself to you guys and let you know some of the things that we're doing down at Hammer Hill Computers. One of the programs that I wanted to mention to you was something that we're doing for people that just got out of jail, returning citizens, as we call them. We are doing computer training, and this is free of charge. We do it out of pocket. And basically, what happens is, normally, we tell people, when they get out of jail, "Find a job". Well, when they went into jail, they were finding a job in the back of the Sunday paper or something. Nowadays, it's on Indeed, and you need a resume. How do you expect them to find it? So that's why we decided to give the training to the returning citizens to allow them to find that job so that hopefully they don't go back to jail again. So I just wanted to come and let you guys know some of the things that we're doing there. We are doing great things here in Pittsavany County. I'm new to the area, so this is the first time you're seeing me, but I will be coming more often. I want to find out about more of the things we're doing and let you know about some of the things that we're doing down there. If there's anything you guys, if any questions you have or anything, feel free to contact me. My number is 434-298-4484. Please give me a call if you need anything, if you have any suggestions, or anything of that sort.
We sure will. Thank you for coming.
All right.
Thank you, sir. That's it? Okay. Yes, thank you all very much. Item 10, Public Hearings. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of Pittsavany County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors has been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pittsavany County. The Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, in the best interest of Pittsavany County, its citizens, and its prosperity. This will be case number one. Ms. Ragsdale, this is R-22-020. Thank you, Emily.
Case R-22-020, Lisa Wilkinson has petitioned to rezone 0.617 acres located on State Road 968, Sandy Creek Church Road, in the Dan River Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for the consolidation with adjacent properties zoned A-1. On July 5, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Lisa Wilkinson is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Emily. The public hearing is open at 7:55 PM. You say she is here? Anybody else that would like to speak in regards to that?
Mr. Chairman, I believe all of us got maybe an email from her saying that didn't know that she would be here. Is that right, Caleb?
I actually spoke with her this afternoon.
I got that same email, and I did call her. And she said that she didn't think there would be any issue, and she didn't plan on
attending.
Yeah, okay. I thought that was the email that I read, so.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, I will close the public hearing at 7:56 PM. And do I have a motion? I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Cheshire.
I'll make a motion for case R-22-20, rezoning from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision to District to A-1 Agricultural District.
All right. Thank you, sir. What about a second?
Second. I'll second that.
Mr. Dudley, any discussion? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote. Okay, Ms. Wilkinson's property has been rezoned. This is case number two, which is R-22-022. Open the public hearing at 7:56 PM. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-022, Donnie DeValle has petitioned to rezone 4.6 acres located on State Road 870 Vandola Road in the Westover Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A-1. On July 5, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Donnie DeValle is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. Mr. DeValle, would you like to come up and have a word? Okay, sir. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing at 7:57 PM. Mr. Scares, do you have a motion?
Yes, in case R-22-022, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of 4.6 acres from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A-1.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Not cast your vote. Mr. DeValle, your property has been rezoned. Thank you for coming. Thank you, sir. Public hearing, case number R-22-024. Open the public hearing at 7:58 PM. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-024, William and Christie Aston have petitioned to rezone 3.65 acres located on State Road 989 Airport Road in the Dan River Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for future consolidation of the property with an adjacent parcel zoned A-1. On July 5, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Billy Aston is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Aston, would you like to come up and speak? You're good, huh? I don't believe it do. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Close the public hearing at 7:59 PM. Mr. Cheshire, I think it's yours.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for case R-22-024, William Christie Aston, rezoning from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to an A-1 Agricultural District.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. What about a second?
Second.
Mr. Dalton Beecher there, Bob. All right. Any discussion? If not, cast your vote. And sir, your property has been rezoned. Thank you for coming. Public hearing, case number R-22-025. Open the public hearing at 8 o'clock, 8 PM. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-025, Charles Turner and Michael Turner have petitioned to rezone 1 acre located on State Road 851 Sugar Tree Church Road in the Tonsdale Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent property zoned A-1. On July 5, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Charles Turner is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, do you have anything you'd like to say? All right, sir. Thank you for coming. I close the public hearing at 8:01 PM. And I would like to make the motion that we approve the rezoning of 1.0 acre from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A-1. That's my motion. What about a second? Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Not cast your vote. Mr. Turner, your property has been rezoned. Thank you all for coming. Feel free to stay. We're down to be other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district and/or his or her place of residency for non-county citizens, and an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. This is a public hearing, and Ms. Van De Haide, I think that you're up for that.
Yes, it's that time of year again when we're trying to close that one fiscal year and enter into a new fiscal year. And tonight's public hearing is to finalize our FY '22 budget amendments, and so you all would have gotten that in your Friday update several weeks ago so that you could review those amendments. These do not cost you all any money. It is just strictly budgetary entries that are required by our auditors to ensure that all line items do finish in the black. And so we have duly advertised in the Star Tribune on August 3, these said amendments, and they total $21,531,970.26. And so after you all hear the public with any concerns that they may have, then you all are able to vote on these amendments tonight. So I am here to answer any questions or concerns that you all may have from what has been advertised and circulated to you all in the past few weeks.
Okay. Let me open that at 8:03 PM. Gentlemen, y'all have any questions? And is anybody signed up to speak? Nobody signed up. Gentlemen, questions? What about a motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve the adjustments as presented by Finance Director, Ms. May.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. What about a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cheshire? Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote.
Can I get you to close that public hearing? Can you close that public hearing?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry about that. Close at 8:03. Did all that within a minute. And that is passed, 7:00. This is item two. This is PCC 8-7, Revision of Precincts. I'm going to open that public hearing at 8:04 PM. And Ms. Kazee, is she here? Mr. Arnold? Okay, come on up, sir.
I'm going to cover this for our voter registrar, Kelly Kazee. This update to Pittsavany County Code, Chapter 8, Section 7, pertains to voting precincts and polling locations. Essentially, one polling location is in the Hurt Precinct, is being moved from Hurt Elementary School to New Prospect Baptist Church for ADA compliance reasons. And then also, the county's 29 voting precincts are updated to align with the new election districts that were adopted by the Board of Supervisors this past December. This was submitted to the Virginia Attorney General through a request for a This was submitted to the Virginia Attorney General through a request for a certificate of no objection several weeks ago and was recently approved by the Virginia Attorney General. So this just kind of closes the loop and finalizes everything to update county code. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, gentlemen? Anyone sign to speak on this? Okay, I'll close that public hearing at 8:05 PM. Do I have a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion, make a motion to approve the amendments to PCC 8-7 as attached and presented by Super Dave Arnold.
Mr. Dudley, what about a second?
Second.
Mr. Dalton? Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Not cast your vote. We have, looks like, okay, yeah, we have it now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. That brings us down to item 11, unfinished business, item A. This is the revision to FY2023 Fire and Rescue Service Agreement approval. Mr. Key, thank you, it's you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. The county requires volunteer fire and rescue agencies to sign an annual service agreement that details the expectations of both parties. Supervisory Warren and the Fire and Rescue Association reviewed the service agreement and has requested changes to it. Fire and Rescue Commission has reviewed and revised service agreement and recommends the Board approve the attached revised FY2023 service agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the revised FY2023 Fire and Rescue Service Agreement with the changes as presented.
Okay, thank you, sir. What about a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I'd like to make one order, please.
I'm going to vote against this agreement for the same reason I voted against it last month. For me, this has stripped all the accountability that we had in place last year with the exception of one self-reporting document that the agencies will provide on July 2023. Just for your information, we start the budget process in November, and we're going to have really no clear-cut ideas where the agencies are at in their operational funding, what their needs are, because we don't have that accounting in place. One of the biggest reasons that our fire and rescue people gave is that we could review their IRS reporting, their 990s. I did this last week, and out of the 23 agencies, only four are current. I don't know if that's the fault of the IRS or if it's the fault of the departments. That requirement that they supply their 990 reporting before they get their funding from the county is gone. One other point of interest is that almost every agency, with the exception of six, had a surplus somewhere between $30,000 to $50,000 on average, but one even had $190,000 surplus in their budget with $1 million in the bank. I'm not saying that that's a reason to cut any funding. I fully support funding these agencies for their full operational costs, but we, at this point, with the way this agreement's written up, I don't feel we have any idea what they're going to need in the future. Considering we're in the middle of a recession, even though the Biden regime has tried to redefine it, that means two-quarters of 0% growth in our country, and the fact that we have between 40% and 60% inflation highs, we're going to have a serious problem next year in not having the data to make sound decisions, and it's our responsibility to the citizens of this county to provide that kind of accountability. So again, I seriously have problems with this and will not vote for this or any agreement until we reinstitute the accountability issues we had in place in previous years. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
I brought this up...
I'm going to get in that mic.
Yeah, okay. I brought this up, thank you, Mr. Dudley. I brought this back up because there were some parts in there that were going to be potentially penal as far as our agencies being able to collect their funds. I didn't agree with that. A lot of times, we put things in like an ambulance has got to be on site when actually a volunteer agency shows up, and they may have 30 people there controlling traffic or controlling whatever in another department, and we shouldn't penalize them and not give them credit for that call. That was the reason I reached out to Public Safety and our county administrator and county attorney and said this need to be revised and reached out to some fellow board members, and I know that Mr. Ingram took it to fire and rescue, and I'm glad they supported and saw the same things. We have some outstanding departments. We certainly want to keep them that way. Our medium-sized and smaller departments, I think because of that prior wording, was going to probably be adversely affected more than the larger ones, and I think that was an unintended consequence that we just didn't catch. So I appreciate you revising it, and I want to be clear to the public, this is retroactive back to July 1, so the numbers that we saw recently that showed a decline for those departments will be readjusted. Is that correct, Mr. Key?
They've already been adjusted, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, and appreciate everyone on this. I will say, I wish we had the ability to have a little bit more accountability from an auditing standpoint, because I do think it's, you know, I've expressed this many times before, and this is not a slam at anyone, but it's hard as a businessperson for me to sit here and think that we couldn't produce more, better results if we were collectively using the vendor to bill and reduce, if we'd nothing else but reduce administrative costs and everything. I don't want anybody's money as far as who should get it. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, in particular, the medium and small agencies, so I would ask you guys in fire and rescue to at least have some discussion about that. I don't care who handles the money, so to speak, as long as we have some oversight, but, you know, the bigger guys do a great job with it, but I think it's a struggle sometime for the medium and small, and so if you look at it more from a perspective of, you know, let's help everyone, because we don't need to lose the medium and the small ones either. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. All seven votes been cast, and it approves six to one. That brings us down to new business. Do we have any new business?
No, sir.
No new business. Matters from the work session, if any?
No, sir.
None. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Board member reports. Mr. Cheshire, I'll start with you, sir.
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Got some good news. I did finish my last chemo treatment.
Yes.
If I would have been here, it's hard to say it. Where I was eight months ago compared to now is a whole different ballgame. I did get a report of no cancer, so God's been good.
Yes.
But apparently, it's going to take me a year to be able to play golf like I was playing before, which was poorly. That's the reason I don't play on PGA. But I am getting stronger. My hair is coming back. It's coming back gray this time, but I do want to, want you to know, I haven't said a lot, but the appreciation of my wife, especially her, and myself, the prayers, thoughts, calls, cards, you would not believe the amount of cards I got from people I didn't even know. And I wanted to take the opportunity to thank everyone for the prayers and consideration, and I just, I couldn't be more grateful to live in Pennsylvania County.
Thank you, sir. It's good. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everyone for coming out. Appreciate everybody participating this evening and just being involved. Thank you so much. I want to touch on a little bit of what Chuck Angier was discussing when he come up about the solar facilities. I got a call this week, and the gentleman told me he would be here, and he called me just before the meeting this evening and said he could not make it. His name's Jeff Cruz, and he was okay with me naming the name, so I did. But I think us as a board, and we had a meeting with, a joint meeting with Planning Commission the other week, where the Berkeley Group is revising our comprehensive plan and our zoning efforts, and one of the things that I brought up is we need to start protecting the citizens around these solar facilities. If you've gone up through Climax and just seen the mess, and I'm not talking about hundreds, 200, 300 yards, I'm talking about you can drive for miles and see that. And I think we, we need to start protecting our citizens more and more. I cannot imagine waking up with it around me, and, and don't, don't get me wrong, I am not against solar farms. I am against these farms coming in, saying they're going to do one thing, and then not doing what they say. We need more buffer. We need more rules to protect our citizens. Solar is a wonderful thing. It's putting it back up on the line. It's made by the sun, and that's, that's just something that comes up every day, and it's going to happen. But I want to say, Chuck, thank you for, for coming tonight. My guy, he knows about the one in Climax and the one in Gretna, and there could be some facilities coming in his neighborhood as well. So out of concern, he did call me, and I promised him I would say something in the meeting tonight. So there, there we are. Like I said, renewable energy is a wonderful thing, but I think really we need to look at protecting our folks, too. Thanks a lot, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Warren?
Hi, Mr. Sir. First of all, I wanted to give a shout out again to the parents that have been through the great project for the last year. It was a good time here to might have seen that. I know that part of the world. Also, I want to give a shout out to one of them back there, Black Jackson, for a little bit of the energy class from Tunstall.
And Jackson, I had my mic off, but glad to have you here. Mr. Two Art sends us a group every year that he wants them to come and see what real government looks like in action, so I hope you learned something. If you didn't, just tell your daddy you did, so thank you for being here. The other thing I want to do is I want to send a heartfelt thoughts and prayers to the Horvill family. Mr. Corey Horvill passed away and had his memorial service recently. You know, a lot of folks, you, Mr. Horvill, you served for a long time. I'm not going to say Corey and I always agreed, but if you always agree, you don't need seven people, you just need one. But he did a great deal in particular on bringing the Berry Hill Project to the starting point and finding the property and, and getting all of that done, so just want to say thank you to his family for his efforts and all that he did do while he served, and certainly keep them in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and also echo some Mr. Warren's comments to the family of Mr. Corey Horvill. He did service his district very well. I worked for the county when he was on the board. A lot of people thought a lot of him, heard a lot of people say he's probably one of the best supervisors ever served in that district. But again, just thank everybody for coming out.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barksdale, you have anything? No? You have anything? Any comments?
I'm glad that you all were here. Make your comments, and I hope that we can do in this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scars?
Just first, just like I say, thanks to the school representatives coming and trying to push this one since sales tax, and I think Mr. Warren stated quite clearly how important that referendum is for the county, where, again, like I said before earlier, we're going to be facing some tough times as we get into next year's budget cycle. I can't, I could go down the list of probably millions of dollars that we're going to have to come up with between now and next year, so I really think this is an important thing to move the, the school system forward, so I fully support that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scars. I likewise, I get to echo what a lot of gentlemen have already said. It was a great turnout then to Tunstall High School and their robotics team. That was pretty impressive. All the interns, y'all did a fabulous job, and, and appreciate y'all serving us. Fire and Rescue, we can't ever say thank you, regardless of what anybody says, you guys are, are our heroes, and we thank you for that. You know, our children, our teachers are back in school. Do remember them in your thoughts and prayers, that they have a good educational and informative and safe year. Corey Horvill was a, a good man, a good friend of mine, and, you know, his, his death, while it was expected, he passed away of cancer. He did a lot of great things in this county, and he was the forerunner of the mega park, and it's just sad that he didn't live long enough to see us land that, that mega corporation, that mega plant, but, but it's coming. But he served the Westover District extremely well, and he will be missed. And last thing in closing, this Friday, we are going to have a dedication ceremony to name two bridges in this county after the two state troopers that died serving the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We have a beautiful service lined up. Family members will be here, the Colonel of the State Police, Gary Settle, will be here, and I encourage you to watch it on, on Facebook Live. We won't have enough room for everybody, but I did want to share that. And that brings me down to Mr. Monday. What do you and Mr. Hunt have for us?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I'd like to take a minute to thank you for providing the funding for the internship program, and that goes for the support of our other partners as well. That is our future. It has been fun and very rewarding for the staff to work with those interns, and I have to say, it feels empty in the mornings to come in and the interns are not at the table. We had some really good conversations. They are our future, and I'm glad to see the Board support that project, and hopefully you and our other funding partners will make that happen again. And finally, to our host departments that provided the leadership and the oversight to those interns, program could not be a success without them. So good job. I applaud you for having an innovative program in our county.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Mr. Hunt, you have anything?
I just echo Mr. Warren and Mr. Ingram's statements about Mr. Horvill. I worked with him for several years. I didn't always agree with him, but I always respected him. I always have thought that Mr. Horvill was one of the greatest politicians on any level that I ever knew, and that includes the federal, the state, the local level. He will be missed. He was a one-of-a-kind person, and the county is a better place for him serving on this Board.
That's very kind words. Thank you for that. Often, we leave out thank yous, but I did want to include our IT guys for what you guys do, and Ms. Kayla for running the, the Board over there, our clerk, and for keeping us straight and all, all that you do to help us, and I'm very grateful for that. So having said that, what about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Right. Go home. Thank y'all for being here.